It happens to me to get here early.
I think our clock is a little bit slow, so we can begin the process there. We have a few things to take care of. So if you would please welcome to our board meeting this morning, and if you'd please join me for our flag salute, and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Is, uh, we're looking for Bryce Reese. Is Bryce here this morning? Oh, good Bryce, thank you. At this time, we're going to present a proclamation to Reese Foods for its longstanding contributions to Tulare County. Not often do we have, in our agricultural economy, a manufacturing company in Tulare County that has achieved notable accomplishments on a national scale. And I should preface my comments by saying, first off, that Reese Foods in Tulare County has a long history in our county, beginning in Tulare, and then later moving to Dinuba, but also having manufacturing facilities in Tulare. There are 2,500 employees of Reese Foods, and approximately 1,700 of those are employed in Tulare County. Yeah, that's worth it. Reese Foods is the largest employer after I think, is the largest private enterprise employer in Tulare County, and probably second behind the county of Tulare in terms of size of employment in, for any company in our county. But also recently, Reese Foods was ranked first among the top 10 United States Hispanic-owned manufacturing companies in the entire country, and the first among the top 500 United States Hispanic-owned manufacturing companies in the state of California, according to the Hispanic Business Magazine. I think that's worthy of applause as well. This morning, we're, uh, it's, we're pleased to have Bryce Reese here this morning with us. And Bryce is the, currently the CEO of Reese Foods, and Fred Reese's son. And it's a privilege for me to present this proclamation. Bryce, if you'd please come forward. So we have this morning a proclamation honoring Reese Foods for its longstanding contributions to Tulare County, and that's true. In 1964, Louis Reese and his son Fred founded Reese Foods, a company that manufactures and sells frozen Mexican foods. In 1983, their hard work, dedication, and innovative business practices earned them national recognition from the United States Small Business Administration. The Reese family of employees has now grown to more than 2,500 outstanding individuals, approximately 1,700 of whom are employed in Tulare County at manufacturing plants in Tulare and Dinuba. Two of Fred's children, Kim and Bryce, carry on the traditions that have made Reese Foods America's leading frozen Mexican food manufacturer. Kim Reese Beck as co-chairman of the company, and Bryce Reese as president and co-CEO. Under the, under Kim and Bryce's leadership, Reese Foods was ranked first among the top 10 United States Hispanic-owned manufacturing companies, and among the top 500 US Hispanic-owned manufacturing companies in California. In addition to its economic impact, Reese Foods has a long and proud legacy of commitment to community involvement in Tulare County. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors is hereby honor Reese Foods for its longstanding contributions to Tulare County, signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpoel, Phil Cox, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the board for the recognition, and just thank all the citizens of Tulare County. It's, uh, we've been here a while, and we've had ups and downs, but just with the values that my father and my grandfather founded Reese on, it's just, you know, working with great people and a lot of hard work will, will keep us going for into the future, and that's our intention. So happy to be a part of Tulare County. This is a great place, this valley. I was born and raised and love it here, so not much will change there. Thank you.
Our next item is also a proclamation of recognition for one of our long-term employees, Gary Roden, 28 years of service in Tulare County. And before Gary comes forward, I, I think it's, this is a great, as I was looking through the resolution, this just demonstrates that Tulare County is a county of second chances. Because he's gone off and retired and come back, and gone off and retired and come back, and somehow he managed to accumulate 28 years of service in Tulare County. Gary, are you here with us this morning? Could you please come forward? You've got your bodyguard with you. Gary Roden has served the county of Tulare for 28 years and nine months. He began his career in public service as a program assistance, assistant in 1977, and then transferred to the position of administrative aide in 1978. After a short layoff, Gary returned to the position of administrative aide, and then promoted to the Fire Protection Services Assistant in 1980 to 1986. After a short retirement, Gary then returned to the county of Tulare as a fire inspector in 1990, and eventually promoted to the deputy fire marshal in 2001, to the position he currently holds today. Well, sort of holds today, right? Because he earned his trust, respect, and friendship of all who have worked with him, and friends and colleagues honored Gary with a retirement celebration on July 29th. And actually, his last day was July 30th. We're glad you still have your uniform. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Gary for his years of service and dedication to the citizens of Tulare County, and congratulate him on his retirement, and wish him the best in all his future endeavors. Gary, congratulations. And I think, would you like to say something to us, Gary?
Tulare County has been home to me for 62, almost 63 years. And, um, I've learned to love the citizenry through my 28 years of service. And, uh, I've learned also by those who I submit to, or have submitted to for 28 years, that Tulare County Fire Department now is one that is dedicated to the people, and give them the best service available. And it's just been great to be a part of that, and to work with the professionals that administer the fire service to the citizenry of Tulare County today. Thank you all very much.
I think Gary, your chief, would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, board. Congratulations, Gary. I brought a list of things up to talk about Gary, but I think you all got a sense for Gary's demeanor, his character, and his, his sense of loyalty. And what I want to leave you with is without a doubt that Gary has made an impact on those that live here, that travel to Tulare County, that work here. It is a safer place. He has contributed, without a doubt, to the greatest end in our fire and life safety inspection practices, and made Tulare County a safer place to live, work, and visit. Thank you for the recognition you provided him this morning. He is very well deserving of it. Thank you.
How appropriate, I think it is, that we honor one of our own that way today, because today is one of our special days when we get to honor the employee of the year. I would read everyone's name that's been nominated, but if I did that, because of Health and Human Services, we'd be here half the morning. So what I would like you to do is, if you were, are you, if you're here as a nominee for Employee of the Year, and if you're already standing, would you please stand? If you're standing, please wave your hand, so that we can acknowledge you. Please, please stand at this time. Thank you very much. One of the great pleasures of being chairman of the board is you get to kind of have the final say after some other folks have had a chance to look through the nominations and window them down. And I'm happy to report, as always, that there's no lack of great people in Tulare County who work for our county government. I've often said, and I think, don't think can be said enough, that our, any success that this county has is because of you. It's not because of buildings, it's not because of a governmental structure, it's not because of a Board of Supervisors, it's because of the employees who work every day, come to work, do their job, do above and beyond their job, that make this county successful. And I would like to thank all of you, and those who are listening on their, perhaps, to our meeting this morning, thank all of our employees, because they are what make Tulare County what it is. But this morning, we're welcome, we're, we have that opportunity to honor one individual. And this person, I think you will agree with me, is most deserving. I'm going to say a few things about this individual before revealing the person, but let me just start by saying, this person's dedication and willingness to accept responsibilities beyond her pay grade have allowed her department to maneuver through some very difficult times. And the comment says, "And most of the time she made," oh, sorry, this person made it seem seamless. This individual not only accepted new responsibilities willingly when asked to do so, but has also brought attention to and voluntarily tackled additional tasks. In other words, this person took initiative. And I think that's always the key to really bringing a lot to the job, is not only doing the job that's put before us, but looking for opportunities to bring their own initiatives to the job. How to make things better for themselves and for their fellow employees. This person sought out, there was an issue in this particular department about overtime, and how it was determined. And it was, there was a concern that the rotation was confusing and inconsistent, and gave way to the concept that perhaps it was unfair and inequitable. This individual sought out information and looked at a variety of ways to distribute the overtime fairly, settled on a system that was fair, easy to understand, and most important, the employees knew that this person was fair and equitable to everyone. This individual is truly an employee that gives true meaning to the words dependable and trustworthy, has an outstanding attendance record, does an outstanding job of balancing work and private life. And I will also add that another special twist is that this individual will be the first person in her department to ever win this award. I'm proud to announce that 2009 Tulare County Employee of the Year is from the Tulare County Fire Department, Emergency Dispatch Service Supervisor Gloria Simoes. There's a plaque that goes with this award. Also, we're hoping that you could stick around for a few extra minutes and have a photograph taken with the rest of the Board of Supervisors when we take a little break after this. And also, there's some remuneration. You get an extra week's vacation. How's that? So it's my honor this morning to present Tulare County Employee of the Year 2009 to Gloria Simoes, Emergency Dispatch Supervisor for the Fire Department, County of Tulare. Congratulations, Gloria. I did give her a chance to say a few words. She said no, but I think her chief has a few words she would like to add.
Do you have any idea how hard it is to keep a secret from the chief dispatcher that makes a living talking to people? When Jeff called and told us of your selection, we were all elated and really struggled with, with keeping this to a very, "Come over here." To a very tight-knit group, but I think we managed. You might have had a clue when you saw Melissa standing back there at the, at the door. Are any of Gloria's family here? Okay.
Her extended family is here.
Yeah, yeah. You hit on a lot of things about Gloria, but some of the things that we were remiss and didn't share with you is how flexible Gloria is in the discharge of her duties. She's not only dedicated to her work, but she also has a family, I think of five daughters? Six daughters. And through being a mom and, and working in a very tedious and stressful job at times, she's successful on all fronts. She's very generous, very thoughtful, as you might gather from just meeting her on this occasion. It's a first impression that she leaves with many. Yeah, I can't say enough about her. She is indeed the architect of the processes and standards and guidelines that we enjoy today at our FireCom, is our emergency dispatch center, 911 center. And it's all due to Gloria and her staff, but primarily through Gloria's leadership and dedication. And we appreciate you very much.
Before I let you all go back to your work sites, I would like to give the other members of the board an opportunity to say a few words. So I'll begin on my right with Mr. Ennis.
Gloria, thank you for your innovations, and thank you for your ways of getting things done and motivating people. And to all of you, to all the people that were nominated, thank you for the job you've done this year, and every year you do on a, on a daily basis. So thank you, Gloria, for what you've done, and thank you for this award that you were presented today for being a standout among your, your peers, but congratulations to all of you too. Thank you.
Gloria, congratulations. You're sitting among the finest we have in Tulare County. It's a very difficult decision to come up with one single employee of the year. And as Supervisor Ennis has mentioned, and Supervisor Worthley, that the people in this room are the backbone of the county government. And we'd like to thank you all for all the efforts that you do. And one thing that Supervisor Worthley mentioned is called initiative. And most of you in this room are here because you have initiative, and that's extremely important to county government. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Yeah, I think most has been said, but congratulations to everyone who is nominated. You are here for a reason. Those that nominated you feel that you are worthy of that, and so do we. Congratulations to you, Gloria. It was, she has a wonderful, bright, bubbling personality as well. When I visited FireCom, I got to see that personally, and so congratulation is well deserved.
Gloria, congratulations to you for your many years of hard work, and all of your effort is sure seen down there at the FireCom Center. But also would like to congratulate every one of the employees who is here today. You've all worked very hard to be recognized by your department heads and recognized by the county as being a very hard-working employee and a well-deserving employee. But also would like to thank everyone who's not here today, all of our employees in Tulare County, because everyone does work hard every day, and we appreciate all the work that they do. And so you are the cream of the crop, you know, this year especially, but each and every year, the whole Tulare County employee base is the cream of the crop. We appreciate all the work you do, and that's what makes our county great, is having great employees. So thank you very much, and have a great day and a great year back at work.
Thanks for that segue. At this time, we'll take about a five-minute recess. Gloria, if you could please come forward. We'd like to get a photograph with you and the rest of the board members. Have a great day. Thank you all for being here. When we get Mr. Ennis back up here, we'll get back on the, on track there. I can see that. Okay, we'll continue on with today's agenda, and we, my clerk reminded me that we need to take action on the, presenting the proclamation, I'm sorry, presenting the appointment, recognition of our county Employee of the Year, so that we can be sure she gets her, her week's vacation. I don't have any slips, but that doesn't mean you can't come forward anyway. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period, take up Board Supervisor Matters. The clerk to my left, Mr. Vandepoel.
I don't have anything to add today.
All right. Mr. Cox?
Wow, this came up quickly. You know, we have a couple of Tulare County Gang Task Force meetings coming up this week, one on Thursday afternoon. The executive committee in the following week with the entire committee will be talking about where the task force, what direction we're going to go over the, this next fiscal year, and would enjoy input from anyone interested in giving direction to that task force. Next week, we have a presentation on the Step Up Summit coming up, and maybe we can talk about it a little bit more at that time. But excited to have a new fiscal year ahead of us and start planning for some new activities. That's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Rashida?
I had the opportunity to spend several days in the Golden Trout Wilderness a couple weeks ago, and I had the pleasure of catching what appeared to be a couple purebred rainbow trout in the Golden Trout Wilderness, which showed that a government program worked for a while, but it, I don't believe it's lasting. So now we're out there poisoning trout up in the high country to protect the frogs. So we'll see if that program works too. Thank you.[702.13][702.13](laughter)
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ennis.
To show how our gang grants work, we, Citrus High School in Porterville took on a grant, one of our $5,000 grants for doing some landscaping at the schools. And the school they picked was Los Robles, and Principal Kathleen Pearson had her students go over there, and they had a pretty rough area they had to clear, and they got that cleared, and some old trees taken out, some stumps. They planted six cypress trees in there, and the cypress trees are going to stand for trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And then each one of these trees will have different colored flowers planted around it. So they'll be coming to the board probably with this in the near future and with pictures and things of it, but this goes to show you how these gang grants are working and putting students to work and teaching them skills, and then on down the road, they'll continue to mentor these young kids at Los Robles School. That's all I have.
We did have, I was involved in a conference call last week involved concerning the Williamson Act. I'm part of a working group with CSAC, California State Association of Counties, having a discussion about where we are with trying to reinstate the state's subvention. And all I can report to you is that currently, there is a bill that is out there that would recreate that at 100%. There's also been a talk about creating something less than that. There's been some discussion about trying to have a self-help type of a thing where farmers might contribute something back to make counties more whole than they are with the loss of the subvention. There are some legal issues with that in terms of legislation, so I don't think that's going to go forward. So still, the effort is trying to get that back into the state budget, which is fully funded, it's about $38 million, and given our $19 billion hole, no one gives that great credence, even though it is a very small number in terms of state budgetary issues, but just to report to the board what's going on there and to the people here. At this time then, we will take up our consent cal, I'm sorry, yes, our consent calendar, and item number 30, we will handle separately. Are there any other issues or items that members wish to handle separately? Not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar, less item 30.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Mr. Fussell's here to talk to us about item 30.
Yes, good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. The item before you this morning is an award of contract to, for the Rich Grove Green Alley's Project. Yesterday, we received a protest letter from the second low bidder, T.B. Pennick and Sons Incorporated. And in the protest letter, it identified four areas where they saw some irregularities in the apparent low bidder's bid. Staff reviewed those irregularities and concluded that there was nothing fatal in them that would prevent the board from awarding the contract. I reviewed staff's work with county council, and county council too concluded that there would be no fatal flaws in the apparent low bidder's bid. I spoke with representatives of T.B. Pennick yesterday afternoon, advised them that we reviewed their letter, couldn't find any, anything in it that would be fatal to the award of the contract, advised them that this was on the agenda for today, for board's action, but that since they were in San Diego, if they had a desire to attend the board meeting and present their case publicly, that I would move the award of contract to next Tuesday. At that point in time, they decided to withdraw their protest letter. So that letter has been withdrawn, and staff is recommending that you award the contract to, I'm going to mess up this name, Chiswiski and Markel Contractors out of Orange to do the Rich Grove Green Alley's Project. And with that, I'd respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions?
Nope.
Hearing none?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you for that. We have an item, a 9:30 timed item. A legal issue has arisen concerning this particular matter, which I believe that the members of the board should be made aware of before we get into the public hearing. So at this time, we will, we will go to closed session on item number six.
And that is on your board's closed session, agenda is item A.
Thank you. We'll be back in a few moments.[995.81][995.81](pause) I see him come through every so often.
Sorry for that delay. We will now take up our timed item, item number six, a request from the Resource Management Agency to waive the final reading and adopt an amendment to section 15D2 of ordinance number 352, Tulare County zoning ordinance pertaining to division of land exceptions within agricultural zones. And we'll have our staff report before we open the public hearing. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman Worthley, members of the board, and Nick on RMA planning. The request before you is a homesite ordinance request to modify section 15D2 of Tulare County zoning ordinance to address the following concerns. Need to larger homesite, maximum homesite parcel size to allow property owners to retain existing improvements which cannot be configured into the existing maximum 65,000 square foot parcel size to protect viable agricultural parcels from excessive parcelization and to address a significant number of variances that were requested and processed by RMA over the last few years. The existing homesite ordinance requires the original parcel to be divided must contain the minimum parcel, minimum acreage in the zone which is located. For example, a parcel in the AE20 zone must contain 20 acres to comply for zoning, or homesite parcel division. The existing ordinance allows for the creation of a parcel between 12,500 square feet and 65,000 square feet. And the property must contain a residence for a minimum of three years or 10 years. The 10-year requirement applies when a homesite is to be sold and the remaining acreage is to be retained. And the three-year requirement applies when the homesite is to be retained and the remaining acreage sold. New provisions of the homesite ordinance include the property must contain a residence or mobile home which has legally existed on the site for five years. This provision essentially consolidates the previous three-year and 10-year requirements. Maximum homesite parcel size shall be determined by the homesite use lines not to exceed 20% of the original parcel or four acres gross, whichever is less. If the original parcel's greater in size than the required in the zone district which property is located, maximum of only one homesite parcel may be created until such time that the remaining acreage of that site is further divided in compliance with zoning. This slide illustrates a 2.73 acre homesite parcel, which is larger than the 65,000 square foot currently allowed. This site is configured around existing physical boundaries, which include a ditch run along south property line, an existing easement along the northern boundary, and a county road to the west. The proposed ordinance will allow for the creation of a homesite parcel up to 20% of the original size, not to exceed four acres, and essentially will allow land that is no longer viable for agricultural use to be incorporated in the homesite parcels. Features which may be considered for establishing homesite use lines may include fences, developed yard areas, vegetations, canals, easements, railroads, et cetera. This slide illustrates new provision, which would limit the number of homesites to a parcel which contains more than the acreage which is required in the zone. For instance, this parcel is zoned AE10 and contains 20 acres. This site contains two residences that meet the five-year age requirement the home is proposed. Under this ordinance, only one homesite would be divided, as shown in the upper-left corner of that lot. The lower home cannot be divided until such time that that 20-acre parcel was divided into two tens in accordance with zoning.
Mr. Hahn? I did have a question for you, it just came to my mind, and you can answer in a minute or later, or now or later, but when we have properties zoned AE20, the fact of the matter is that it's rare to find a piece of property that's actually 20 acres because there will be roads taken off of it, irrigation canals, easements for utility companies or different things. So they end up like they're 19.4 acres or whatever. Do we allow for that kind of a situation? Because in other words, you're not going to have a full 20. It's, you know, that's just, that's just a reality. So we say it's AE20, but is there a plus or a minus that allows for the things to go forward? Because the strict adherence to an actual number could create a tremendous problem going forward.
There is a section of our ordinance establishes determinative acreage for agricultural zones. There are a number of exceptions that apply, some of them being where the section lines, as originally surveyed years and years ago, did not establish true 20-acre sectional breakdowns. And we consider either sectional breakdowns. There are portions of properties within the county that are agriculturally zoned. Many of them, the gross acreage is actually determined up to the center of the right-of-way. And there are additional provisions where property has been conveyed to public agencies with the right to condemn property, and they can, they can justify taking portions or percentage of that taking into their acreage when determining whether or not they can be divided. Several controversial provisions of the ordinance amendment have previously been presented for the planning commission for consideration. Many of these provisions have been significantly revised or omitted. Your board could direct amendment be modified to incorporate any provisions of the amendment which have previously been heard and considered by the planning commissions. Previously, provisions previously proposed by RMA include 10-year ownership requirement to qualify for a division. This particular provision was borrowed from Williamson Act, lands subject to Williamson Act requirements. Additionally, there was a 10-acre minimum parcel size to comply, or to qualify for a land division. This policy was really aimed to put the ordinance in line with the Rural Value Lands Plan and the policies of the general plan. And also, only one homesite may be created despite property having more than one residence. The cities have requested that a provision be incorporated to prohibit homesite parcel creation within their urban area boundaries and/or urban development boundaries. The proposed ordinance has generated numerous comments and concerns. These may include the amendment may unreasonably limit the rights of property owners, settling an estate or distributing property through trust should be recognized by the county for allowing divisions of land do not conform minimum acreage. The amendment may increase the existing loopholes for divisions of agricultural lands, may proliferate the urban encroachment and ranchettes in agricultural areas, and that the ordinance may create difficulties for cities' future annexations of these properties. Staff requests that your board approve the notice of exemption prepared for the project and adopt the amended, as recommended by a planning commission, as amended under alternative number two, to incorporate a provision that no parcel less than 10 acres be further divided. This provision will promote consistency with Rural Value Lands Plan and general plan. Staff requests that your board direct the clerk to publish a summary of the ordinance as required by law. Subject to any questions you may have, that concludes staff's report.
Mr. Hahn, one of the things that was raised as a legal question in our closed session had to do with the term, and I believe in the proposed ordinance, it would be G4, and if it applies elsewhere, that it'd be instead of saying original parcel size, you would say existing parcel size?
Existing, existing parcel of record may be the correct way to term it.
Are there any other questions by members? Not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter is asked to come forward at this time. Please give us your name and address. I see lots of interested people. They don't want to say anything apparently today. So we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to board for discussion and/or action.
Jim, did you, excuse me, Jim, were you, you want to say something?
We opened the public hearing.
Thank you. I'm Jim Whitten. Business address is 150 West Morton in Porterville. I was pretty involved in all the discussions. I don't think I missed any, well, I missed a couple of planning commission meetings, but most of the discussions in relation to this, and I did want to say that the staff spent an inordinate amount of time on this, tried to make everybody happy, which I guess makes nobody happy. Maybe that's why it's a good ordinance, I don't know. But I do want to, I did want to thank the staff at the time and the effort that they put in to try to resolve what started out to be a pretty simple altern, or task, and that was just to modify parcel sizes to eliminate the necessity for these zone variances. That was the original task, and it just kind of grew from there. The group, the, I guess the stakeholders, or the group that I'm involved with is, is supportive of the planning commission recommendation. There, I don't know how much of the additional staff suggestions here that we need to discuss. I did want to share with you the one issue that we seem to have with the Williamson Act requirement that the property be owned for a minimum of 10 years. And my experience has been that where that becomes an issue is where the farmer or the patriarch has passed away, and the property goes into trust or gets distributed to the heirs. That actually triggers, or they don't allow you to carry forward the estate's ownership or the original owner's ownership. So in effect, you cannot then divide any homesites or do any divisions in relation to this section because the 10 years has to start over again. So that's been the primary issue, or the, or the only, really the only issue that I've run into in relation to the land divisions as they relate to the ownership length. Appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Then we'll close the public hearing. Now, my understanding is that particular issue that was presented to by staff was, you might come up, Mr. Hahn, where the recommendation is that the house is in existence for five years, not that there's an, we're basically taking away the ownership requirements.
Correct. I did present it to you as one of the alternatives that was proposed and considered.
the only issue that I've run into in relation to the land divisions as they relate to the ownership length. Appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Then we'll close the public hearing. Now, my understanding is that that particular issue that was presented to by staff was, you might come up, Mr. Hahn, where the recommendation is that the house is in existence for five years, not that there's an, we're basically taking away the ownership requirements. Is that correct?
Correct. I did present it to you as one of the alternatives that was proposed and considered under planning commission. Your board could choose to modify planning commission's recommendation, incorporate that. The only provision that I am requesting that you incorporate at this time is that no parcel less than 10 acres be divided. Therefore, parcels within the AE or A1 zone which currently are required to have five acres to qualify for home site division, any properties within those zones would essentially have to have 10 acres or greater.
Any other questions, comments? Public hearing is closed, so bring it back for discussion.
A comment I tend to support that. The alternatives were kind of clumped together and had multiples. So pulling that one piece out, requiring that no parcel less than 10 acres may be further divided, I support that as a viable alternative to staff recommendation.
Chairman, I also believe that's covered under the portion of the ordinance which relates to division by wills. So if it's in the will and it's divided, is that correct?
Well, the, you could have residences on a parcel that would not meet the home site requirement, and even though the matter went through probate, the heirs might still have to apply for a zone change, lot splits, et cetera. The home site would apply, the home site rule applies. Having said that, sometimes the court, in its wisdom, does not consult as it is supposed to do with planning staff before making decisions. And this does allow us to use the court's, call it their division, if we choose to, rather than going through the other involved procedure.
Okay.
Nick, one more question just to be sure I'm clear in this then. You're asking us today to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission. Your comments about the no smaller than 10-acre parcel was included within that?
No, that would be under-
That's a different, that's a modification of the actual recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah, it would be alternative to to incorporate provisions which were previously considered.
All right. And now to make, and to be very clear about that, the request is that the existing parcel would be 10 acres or greater. In other words, a home parcel site could be created and parceled off, leaving something less than 10 acres if the existing parcel started off at 10 acres or greater. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you could end up with an 8-acre parcel or something like that. But that's, that would be, that would be it?
Correct.
All right.
Well, and I just would make one comment too, and thank RMA staff for really doing a good job reaching out to all the stakeholders that really had an interest in this process. It took a long time. You reached out to the Ag Advisory Committee, reached out to the Farm Bureau, reached out to land surveyors, et cetera, and really brought in a lot of input. And I think that was a really good part of this process. And that's why it's not as contentious as it may have been had that outreach not been done. So thank you to staff for doing that. I appreciate that as a board member. So.
Mr. Chair, I think most of contention was hammered out before it got to this point.
And Mr. Chair, I would be glad to make the motion to approve staff recommendation, including the no parcel less than 10 acres may be further divided.
And to make that clear, it's that we're recommending the adoption of the recommended, what was adopted by the planning commission with the one addition of no less of the 10-acre provision.
That is what my motion was.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ashida. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Thank you very much. I know a lot of work went into this. Again, thanks to the staff and to the stakeholders who spent a lot of time on this matter.
Very much.
And that will take us then to our untimed items. Item number 32 is a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize new office hours for the Army at the Vice Mayor Government Plaza to be open to the public Mondays through Fridays, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Closed Fridays effective August 13, 2010. Mr. Hunt?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. The item before you today, as you indicated, is to change the office hours in which RMA would be serving the public.
Roger, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Roger Hunt, Assistant Director for RMA.
Thank you.
Thank you. The current work schedule for the employees at RMA and Government Plaza is 7:30 to 4:30 Monday through Thursday. Five, I'm sorry, 5:30 Monday through Thursday, and then on Fridays from 8 till noon. And that's also the office hours in which we're open to the public. So there's no time that we're, with our work schedule, where we're not available to serve the public. Just to give you a little bit of a background, over the last couple of years, we've had the activity at the permit center reduced significantly. In 2006, we had almost 5,600 permits that were processed, and in 2009, only 3,200. That was a reduction of 42%. And 2010 calendar year, we're on track to equal what 2009 was. So it looks like we've kind of bottomed out and stabilized. But also during the last two years, due to the recession, RMA has had to reduce the planning and building staff by 50% from 62 positions to 31. And so with those positions being eliminated, and of course, some were vacant, but others were through layoffs. The agency's had to reorganize, and we've also had new managers come into the planning side. And so they've been reviewing their processes and in the direction of our director, looking to simplify and streamline, looking at those processes, and some of them they've been bringing to your board for approval, and looking at what we can do internally. One of the things that we have also been doing is the office assistants, the clerical staff are providing more support to the planners, to the building inspectors, for, also for code compliance and dairy monitoring, so that there's more involvement of staff and support. And it's because we have limited resources and trying to provide the services. The managers felt that to further improve the effectiveness in serving the public, that a change in the hours would allow staff then to have this time where they're not having to meet with the public at the counter or take on a phone call, to then do the research and investigate inquiries, and also set up appointments to meet so that more of the work can be done more effectively. And so with that, we're requesting the change in the hours.
Roger, if I understand it correctly, there is a provision that, like, let's say someone says, you know, my work schedule just does not allow me to meet your schedule, that they could actually make an appointment to come in at those other hours? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so if someone says, I can't, I've got to be at my job place at 8 o'clock, can I make an appointment to meet somebody at 7:30?
Yes.
They could do that, but that would be on an individual basis?
Yes, it would be. It wouldn't be where we're taking people just coming in off the street. It would be where the people are making appointments. And we recognize that there's going to be the people like the developers that need to come in and pick up plans or something of that nature, that there'll be the ability to set those appointments.
Very good.
That was really the question that I was going to ask, was just that I noticed in the staff report that you did provide the ability for people, if their schedule did not work within the hours that have been established here, the opportunity to meet with RMA staff at a different time based on their schedule. And does that hold true on Fridays as well?
Well, on Fridays, yes. But the, I was going to say, on Fridays, your board just today approved the temporary furloughs.
Yeah.
And so we're looking at being closed, and so we were hoping to make the change in coordination with that.
Well, once the furloughs have passed.
Once the furloughs are passed, on Fridays, we would be able to make appointments.
Okay.
And because they'll be doing business, just not open to the public.
And I have to tell you too, this is, I appreciate RMA doing this. This is, that's one issue that I've been, it's been mentioned to me in various departments as I have visited them, that they just need time to be able to do their desk work and keep up on filing and, you know, research, follow-through, et cetera. And so I really think that this is going to be very positive for the staff and help them to feel good about the work that they're doing, as well as better for the public in order to get things done in a more timely fashion, so.
My, our PIO asked me this morning, is this, is this permanent? And I said, well, I said, this is a reaction to what you've just described as a circumstance where we have reduced the size of our staff, we have reduced activity, and this appears to be the most effective way to use our time and meet the needs of the public at this time.
Correct.
But that doesn't mean it will always be so. I mean, it may be a situation where, again, things pick up, and we have more staff, and we have more, and we know, the idea is not to have people standing out into the halfway across Government Plaza to try to get into the RMA department, but that's certainly not the situation today. So this, I look at this as being an appropriate use of limited resources and personnel to be more efficient with what we do, recognizing that things could change tomorrow. And tomorrow's not tomorrow in tomorrow sense, but off in the distance sometime.
That's correct. We have the responsibility to respond to these changes in the work environment, what's happening with the recession. And as things change, we'll have to continue to review and then make additional changes.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mr. Ashida?
Please, Mr. Ashida.
You know, we did this 39 years ago at the USDA, and it wasn't because of a lack of personnel. It was because it was overwhelming for our counter people to get their work done. Even when you have a large volume of business, you need that desk time, those people need the desk time to catch up on the work they did the previous day. And I'm not suggesting we make this as a permanent public office hours, but it does make sense even during times when we have high volumes. I want to emphasize that this is public hours, that the counters are, that were open. And it's not, our employees will be there before those hours and after those hours. So it's not a reduction of time spent by our staff.
Right. And counsel?
Just, I wanted to advise your board that pursuant to the government code, you set the hours of operation, that is, the hours in which the employees work and the office is open for work, and the hours of public access. So just as you're doing now, you could change it prospectively as circumstances change.
Fox?
Quite. I guess another technical question. How do you work the front counter? Is it done on a rotation basis? And how many planners do you have that rotate to the counter?
I was going to say, Ben Kimball, our chief planner responsible for the permit center, probably answered that question best.
Mr. Chairman, supervisor Cox, we do have a rotation basis. We have, I want to count, 10 planners that take turns at the permit center. And when they're not at the permit center, they're back at their desk working on discretionary projects predominantly, if they're not also working on the large-scale projects. The desk work that we're talking about is primarily processing building permits. That is the single most concern with the planner's time at the permit center. They're required to do building permits while they're assigned at the permit center. But if they spend the entire time from 7:30 to 5:30 of the day standing at the counter helping people, which is what they typically do, it's hard to get those permits going. Now, we've tried to make arrangements to have them work on it at other times, the building permits, but it's at a cost to getting the discretionary permits done. And so our idea was if we had a little bit of time in the day to wrap up and tackle those building permits and knock down the pile each day, it would keep them from building up, and it would get things flowing a little bit smoother, so.
Hold on, let me ask you further then. So you have 10 planners that work the counter, and on a rotation basis, they work the counter one day every 10 days?
No, the way we have it now is they work a couple days a week for two weeks. So they work two or three days on one week, and then two or three days on the next week, and then they're off for a little while. And then they're back on for a couple days in a two-week period.
So there's a rotation where they have desk time and no counter time?
Yes.
I just, I personally am not in favor of not having someone there at the counter and the door is locked during business hours. Even if it's someone to take their paperwork and say, I'll call you back, I just can't see locking the door during business hours. I mean, there's a rotation. They're at their desk, not having to work the counter every day, which is what we're, what I think we've been led to believe is they're constantly being interrupted day in and day out, and hour in and hour out by having to go to the front counter. That's not the case.
Well, I think what I heard him say was that there's basically two aspects. One is they're working on discretionary projects, and then they're working on the projects that are created at the counter. And what happens when they're not on the rotation cycle is that they're working on discretionary projects, and there's just this gap that's not being addressed, which are the projects created at the counter. And I think-
I don't, as a contractor, I don't anticipate walking into the permit center and walking out with a permit. I expect there to be a process. I take my paperwork, and I'm, and they, at the counter, they go, okay, you filled out everything, we'll take it, and we'll call you when your permit's ready. And I don't know if that's a process now where people walk in and expect to have a permit. That's never been my expectation. I just think there ought to be someone there at the counter to at least receive the paperwork, even if it's just, you know, secretarial staff to say a stamp and the case received, a planner will call you back. I just don't like the idea of having doors closed during business hours.
Chairman?
Yes.
My experience in retail is that people don't come in staggered. They seem to come in at one time. And what happens is that you don't want a bunch of people sitting there not being served when you have people in the back that could help them. So if everything was regimented to a time schedule, that one person come in 10 minutes, and 20 minutes later, another one, it doesn't happen that way. They all seem to come in at one time, and then puts a demand on all the staff, not just the person on rotation. It's just how, it's phases of the moon or whatever you call it, but that's how business runs.
Well, if I could just make a comment, I think, as to what Mr. Cox, I understand his, where he's coming from, and that's why I think it's important to look at this. I look at this as an experiment, if you will, to see if it's successful. If it turns out that there's a major problem with developers and contractors and general public that says, hey, this isn't working, then we would come back and revisit it. But I think it's appropriate to look at trying different things to be more efficient. We have cut back on our staff. The workload is less in terms of projects, but it doesn't mean that there is an awful lot of work to be done. And I can see where we're trying to compartmentalize ourselves a little bit to get better use of our time. And I think we should give the agency an opportunity to try this, and if it doesn't work out, we always come back and change it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think what they're trying to do here, in my estimation, is to cut the timetable down on getting permits and stuff processed. And if these people can be doing their research and working on this thing diligently and not being at the counter, then they can move these projects forward much quickly. And I think that's what the contractors and the people and the individuals out there want done, whether it be a lot line adjustment or whatever it is. They want to get it done and move on. So I commend you for looking at this and hopefully moving these projects forward.
Well, that's the end result we're hoping for.
I entertain a motion.
I would move approval, especially given this is temporary. You know, if it works out, great, we'll keep going. If it doesn't, then we can change. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve this matter.
Seconded.
We have a motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are four to one. Mr. Cox in opposition, motion passes.
Thank you.
And that will bring us to item number 33, a request from the Resource Management Agency to acknowledge that a written protest against the proposed user fee increase was received from a majority of the owner-tenants of the properties affected by the proposed user fee increase in the Tuleville sewer zone of benefit.
Mr. Fussell? Rick Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. Back on July 20th, the board held a public hearing regarding user rates within the county sewer and water zones of benefit in the county service area one and two. At that point in time, I presented information to the board that indicated that a rate adjustment was needed in the Traver and Tuleville areas. Tuleville residents did submit written protest letters that were in conformance with requirements of Prop 218. Staff took those back, reviewed those, and to make sure that they were all, you know, determine if they were valid. As a result of that review, we identified that there were sufficient number of protest letters submitted that would prevent the board from being able to raise the sewer rates in the Tuleville zone of benefit. In the Tuleville zone of benefit, there are actually 82 affected parcels. Therefore, the threshold for having a valid protest would be half of those plus one or 42 parcels. We received a total of 55 letters, of which we were able to validate 53 of those indicating that the protest was valid. So with that, staff is recommending that you adopt the attached resolution, which would set the sewer rate in Tuleville the same as it was last year. With that, I respond to any questions that the board may have.
Just for clarification, this represents the second year that this occurred?
That's correct, yes.
And so there's been no increase for two years, whereas we've increased everybody else's, I believe, pretty much at least one time over that same timeframe?
Yes.
And what is the agency's response to decreased revenue in light of operational expenses?
We're going to do the best that we can to manage the system and not incur any expenses without reviewing those to make sure that they're necessary. without reviewing those to make sure that they're necessary. That doesn't provide a guarantee that we would be able to make this system come in equal to the revenue, because historically it has not. The Tuleville zone of benefit is one of those zone of benefits that probably has the largest general fund revolving loan against it over its life.
Questions? As I look through the financial impact, we're gonna increase this year's subsidy to sixty-three thousand eight hundred. That, that's almost a thousand dollars per home. You know, I, I'm wondering, how can a small water system cost so much?
The sixty, this is, it's a sewer system. The sixty-three thousand is across the entire eleven systems that we operate, all the sewer and water districts. It's by, this action of this protest being valid increases the loan amount. If we had put the rate in place, had been able to put the rate in place, the estimated loan amount would be about forty-one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars less than that sixty-three thousand across the entire zones of benefit program.
Okay, so it was fifty-nine, now sixty-three?
Right. I did indicate, when I made my presentation at the last hearing, that we were, I think, rather successful in the past fiscal year of keeping those costs downs and managing them, and coming in significantly lower than what I had projected for the general fund loan. And I, again, have asked staff to be as diligent, again, this year, and try to do the same thing.
Are we, if I can, are we working on some kind of permanent fix? I mean, I, you know, I know we have this conversation every year, but we continue to dump general fund dollars into, you know, the, these communities, and, you know, is there some type of light at the end of the tunnel? You know, once the, once the word catches on, hey, all you gotta do is sign the letter, and they're never gonna increase your water sewer rate again. You know, our, our loan amount is gonna continue to increase and increase, and, you know, I, I'm just wondering. It's all, oh, it's only sixty-three thousand dollars. That's budget dust for a county that's doing almost a billion dollars a year, but that's not budget dust. That's, you know, a full-time employee. That's, I, I just, I'm concerned that we, you know, I'd like to see some kind of a resolution, even if it's ten years away. What are we doing to eliminate this subsidy to these systems?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Shida.
To answer that question, Supervisor Cox, the Tulare County Water Commission is working on this issue. And we have a subcommittee for disadvantaged communities. And also, we have a subcommittee for nitrate issues for potable water. And we've actively been seeking grant money with the help of the Board of Supervisors to make these systems sustainable. And oftentimes, what we're looking at is hooking these communities up to other municipalities or larger systems to make them sustainable. Very, a sewer system today is breakeven viable on two-hundred homes. That's not to say, in three years from today or next year, when the government asks for a different standard, that they would become unviable. So Tuleville does not have anywhere close to two-hundred homes, and that's why we have to look for alternatives, and that's what the Water Commission is doing.
And it probably won't have two-hundred homes in my lifetime.
Well, that's, I wanna, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Fussell, but, I mean, I will let him speak in a moment, and I think counsel and also, J C, I wanna say something. But there, I would say, this has been something of an intractable problem, but I do think there are many fronts upon which it's trying to be attacked, or addressed, maybe a better term. One is, as Mr. Shida said. Another, in terms of trying to gain perhaps funding from other sources to fix problems. The other is trying to find opportunities of connecting these systems into larger systems. Another one is our general plan that would allow for growth in these inappropriate communities, so you have more hookups that would then make these systems more, more viable. And then the other thing is, there's a, we need to have a political solution, because it's not appropriate that people can simply say, I don't want to pay a higher fee, when it actually costs that to provide the service. I mean, the fact of the matter is, there has to be some way around this process legally that the...
You hit it right on the head. That's what I'm struggling with, is...
Yeah. Well, and that, and that's something we can't fix. That's something we have to fix at the state level. There needs to be a statutory change that allows for some, you know, I mean, you can, you can go through a process that says, okay, we can't change it today, but upon hearings, a determination of, you know, of actual cost and so forth, these are the actual costs. And based upon that, there's some way to override that kind of a public process. Because otherwise, I could just vote and say, I don't want to pay taxes tomorrow, and I don't have to pay taxes, 'cause I vote, you know, I guess if enough people did that, we could.
Supervisor Cox asked the...
Supervisor Cox asked the same question last year. And there is movement, is maybe a strong word, but there is interest in statutory reform, as Supervisor Worthley discussed. And at this point, it's sort of being informally led by the County Council of Madera County, along with other counties that have similar problems. And there have been a series of discussions. I do not believe, unless Mr. Russo knows something, I don't, that we yet have anybody willing to bring a bill forward. So it could be a ten-year process. It could be a long process. But the idea would be, in some fashion, that you have some sort of third-party objective person, a mediator or something, make a determination regarding the actual need for the fees, and while still, of course, allowing for the constitutionally protected protest proceeding. So there, there is movement, small movement.
Thank you. As a follow-up to Supervisor Shida's comments, on the board's agenda for next week is the acceptance of a two-million-dollar planning grant for the disadvantaged community group that we, we set up probably a year, year and a half ago. So we are making some strides and developing some preliminary plans that will help us hopefully get some of these systems shovel-ready, when future monies are available at the federal and state level.
Okay. Anything else? There's no action required on this, is there?
Yes, there is. You have to adopt a resolution that would set the rate the same as last year.
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shida.
It's not, it's not gonna do me any good to vote no this time.
Seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. I know, not, not happily, but unanimous. Okay, item thirty-four, last item, is ratified and approved the following memorandum of understanding between the county Tulare and a whole raft of our negotiating entities. And I will turn this over to our HR director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. I'm pleased to announce that the county has reached agreement with seven of its employer organizations or unions, in addition to having settled a re-opener on financial issues with the Service Employees International Union, which had a two-year contract. These contracts are all for one year. We essentially, in most of the cases, repeat the forty-hour furlough, including the one-point-nine percent pay reduction. We continue with the frozen step increases and freezing selected promotions. We continue to suspend the sick leave buyback program and the deferred compensation match. There are some variations in these contracts, and in particular, with the deputy sheriffs, in place of some of the other items, they gave up their uniform allowance, and they also agreed to straight time overtime rather than time and a half for some of their overtime hours. At the present time, we are still in the bargaining process with our attorneys and our physicians. Nevertheless, with all the other actions the board has taken with the unrepresented employees, plus these seven agreements and the SEIU contract, we have now under contract for 2010-11 over ninety-seven percent of the county's employees. These contract arrangements will end up saving or avoiding nine million dollars in labor costs. My principal message today, however, is to say thank you to the association and union representatives who had what I described as a thankless job of taking back to their members the message of another year of continuing givebacks to their membership. I would also like to say that without exception, the employees at the bargaining table representing their association or union were, without exception, professional and courteous during these very difficult conversations, and are very much deserving of our thanks and appreciation. I also want to thank the management staff of the departments who assisted human resources with the bargaining process. And I think it's also important that we acknowledge, and I would like to express appreciation to you, the Board of Supervisors, and to the county administrative officer and his staff for your wisdom and judicious use of county resources that enabled us to minimize the impacts on the employees. And so with that, I am prepared to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Russo?
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I'd like to thank Tim and his, his department for their hard work during this, these very difficult times. I know it wasn't easy, to put it mildly, dealing with some, with what we have to deal with, but I appreciate your efforts. And I just want to reiterate your comments about the, the folks involved in the bargaining process of the various units, and including all of our employees, for, for being very understanding and working with management to get through these difficult times. So, Tim, good job.
I would like to also extend my thanks to Tim and his staff, and to the employees at Tulare County. These are not easy times. I do think it's worthy of note that perhaps what made this more acceptable to our employees was that when you, we don't live in a isolated place, so we are aware of what's happening around us. And we see such things as Madera County, where they have two days of furlough per month, and Fresno County, where they have had laid off a number of people, and they're still in the process of trying to figure out where they're going to go. And in Kern County, where they're asking their employees to give back thirteen percent of their pay, so that, the, what we've asked of our employees is painful. I mean, giving up anything is painful. Giving up one-point-nine percent of your salary for a furlough is not, is not without its difficulties. But relative to other governmental agencies, Tulare County really has weathered this bad economy better than most. And I, and I think because of that, that's helped us to get to this place where we are today. And I do want to thank our, our employees for being understanding and accepting that, you know, there are no hidden pots of money. We're not stashing away in off-seas accounts a bunch of money for Tulare County. We are very transparent in terms of our funds, and we, we share with our employees as we have the funds to do that. And I think it, it's, it's all worked out very well, but again, thanks to you, Tim, and to the employees of Tulare County for reaching this point today. This is a major milestone for the board, and as we look forward in the budgeting process, and it's very important. So, thank you. Comments?
I'd just like to thank you too, Tim, for all your hard work, and also thank the employees for understanding where we are and, and knowing that these are difficult times. But thank you so much for all your hard work and your...
Vanderpul?
I would just also echo and thank you, Tim, for all your efforts, and, and your team for working hard through this bargaining process. It's never an easy process, but you had to go through many long nights and long hours, and just really put yourself hard to get through this, and really commend you for doing that. And also commend the employees, the management, and also the elected officials. Everyone's actions and the moves that they've taken really do show that we do all have the philosophy that we're all in this together. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Can I add a thanks? Yes, you can, if you want to make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the contracts, but I also want to thank the previous board members prior to me being on the board for being physically responsible for all these years to help this weather this storm. So it goes back way beyond the members that are currently sitting on the board.
I'll second that with a ditto to everything that's been said. Praise to Tim for getting this done, and, and your staff.
Motion by Mr. Shida, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. They are up there unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will retire to closed session for our remaining items, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you've already addressed items A, or item A. Your remaining items B through H on your board's closed session agenda will be considered. I do not anticipate an announcement. Please note that item G is off agenda.
Thank you.